So, is everyone ready to start? Right. So, let us call the September meeting of the Marburg Planning Commission Order. It's Monday, September 5th, 7:06 PM. And let the minutes note that all members are present except for Planning Commissioner Boyes, requested, so six of us are here tonight. We're joined by Chloe Moore from the County Planning Commission. She's here at the meeting. I cannot see my screen yet, but I see Kevin Walsh, the Borough zoning administrator, on Zoom, and I guess that's Michelle Carroll.
So, it says that it's the top those three people in the waiting room?
Um, so it's...
No, that's the guy just before you get going, those people that are trying to go.
Thank you, thank you. I'm one of them. Ira, Fred, and you, yeah, okay. It's only the president of council. But...
Three of us.
All right, it looks like they're here.
I'm here too. Great. Okay. So, we're also joined by two members of the public who've joined us. So, let us begin our meeting. First, I'll welcome everyone back. Hope you enjoyed your month off in the Marburg Planning Commission business. In my own household, they said, "It's been a really long time since you've been a planning commissioner." And to which I said, "Well, glad to be back." Tonight, we have a normal update in the review of minutes. Our main items of business are to review the final draft of the subdivision of land development ordinance. And Chloe, who's here tonight, has provided us with that as well as a memorandum to kind of guide our reading of it. So, Chloe, I'll ask you to lead that conversation tonight. We have two zoning amendments to continue discussing. We did discuss them in July, and with feedback received, have new versions of those amendments to discuss. One has to do with the green building bonus, and one has to do with historic properties in the 5D district. And then, we would have public comment at the end of the meeting. I would like to ask if we can amend the agenda under zoning amendments to also have a discussion, if we have time, of provisions in zoning code related to short-term occupancy of dwelling units and Airbnb's, which the borough staff, the zoning administrator, have asked us to reconsider this issue. And so, if we get to that agenda, I'd like to ask Kevin Walsh to brief us on why the borough would like us to reconsider this issue. So, do I have any objection to adding that to the agenda tonight, if there's time?
If there's time.
Okay, if there's time. All right, so let's proceed then to the first item on the agenda, the Chair's update. I have a few things to mention. First of all, I mentioned Airbnb. I'm happy to report, although I cannot say anything about what it means, maybe Michelle can, or Fred can, Fred Bush, but the borough has received a grant for the purchase of the Apple from the state, I believe it's a matching grant.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what this is?
Well, I saw the DCNR agreement, so that Narvik was awarded this grant. It's, you have a couple of years to get it. You don't have to make the purchase immediately, but it's 50% of the estimated cost that was stated in the grant application. So, there's still a big chunk of money that needs from somewhere. And there may be opportunities with the county to find additional funding for it. But, I mean, I've dealt with grants like this in the past, and I don't know any more particular about this grant. But it's great, congratulations.
Yeah, it's good news.
It'll probably make it work, because there are other grant opportunities to find other money, and maybe the borough has a little bit to take in, I don't know.
Okay. We'll find out.
Well, three cheers for whoever made that happen.
Yeah, thank you to the borough team for making it happen. Okay, second, or the next item on the Chair's update is, I was informed today by the borough office that a preliminary application, the 146 Marion, has been received. So, that will be on our agenda next month. And I didn't send it out to you, but I will send it out to you in short order. And when we receive the review letters, I will send those out. I have not looked at it, I just received it today. So, it'll be on our agenda next month. Last Chair's update, we received an inquiry, inquiry from one of the planning commission members about 500 Dudley and compliance with the zoning code of that property. And so, Kevin Walsh, that development, Kevin Walsh, has agreed to brief us on that and to answer any questions. So, Kevin, thank you for making yourself available for that. I'll turn it over to you.
So, I'll break this down into kind of the three parts I think you're most curious about. The first one being the demolition. The zoning permit was issued back in June of 2021. So, the entire building could have been demolished in the extent that the building could have been demolished without going through a hub. So, I guess that might have been one of the bigger issues. The other zoning issue that I think came up was maintaining non-conforming parts of the building. If they were to demolish the entire building, they would have lost some of their side and front setbacks. And I'll kind of get into that. Do you mind muting yourself?
Why can't we cut that just apart, please?
Thanks. So, I think the biggest question was the side yard setback and probably the front porch that was demolished. And I'll start with the sidewall. The sidewall established an existing non-conforming side yard setback with 506 Dudley Avenue. I think it's about two feet or three feet or something like that. When they started demolishing the wall, they braced that exterior wall, and we're going to keep it in place. Once we started doing the inspections, we realized that exterior wall was a dilapidated terracotta wall. And we just thought, for structural and just safety purposes, just knocking down that exterior terracotta wall and making the entire structure with just normal lumber framing would be safer and just easier for everybody. So, they maintained that existing sidewall. The one condition that I put in place, that there's a lot of tug-of-war, was that that was now a new assembly of the exterior wall. So, I made them remove any exterior wall openings. They're too close in terms of a fire separation distance. They're getting super technical, and they were required to rate entire exterior wall and the eaves and overhangs with a one-hour assembly. So, those are kind of building code-related matters. So, they're taking it into effect. I will say that the front porch was never given the green light to be demolished. We got there when the last panel was coming down. But with that being said, we do have the, essentially, they're as-built from the zoning plan where the front porch, the enclosed unconditioned porch, was to remain. So, we know the size, the location setbacks, everything like that. They actually still have all the original wood and glasswork for that front porch, and they're just going to build kind of a new frames and reinstall those. So, that porch will look exactly the same as previously existed. It's going to look just like 506 Dudley Avenue by the time it's done. Some of those concerns address most of everything. I know, Jim, you had some questions, right?
Well, you've addressed some of them. I have a nearby neighbor, and I watched this thing with some consternation over a period of months, as I'm sure you know. The, it did appear that it was a deliberate effort on the part of the developer and builder to pull a fast one. To be perfectly straightforward in my thinking about it, the issue of the porch was clearly being supported with sky hooks and whatnot for quite some time. That's not the way normal construction is done. So, it got my, it got my attention.
Yeah, to believe it or not, as it relates to that side exterior wall, when I usually said, "You can demolish it," not that you must demolish it, there was a lot of pushback from the contractor, some really heated arguments, really, because they'd spent $8,000 or $10,000 on shoring plans and materials and things like that to keep that exterior wall up. So, they were not happy because they thought I told them they had to remove that wall, which I obviously never did. But, so I don't think, I don't think the exterior wall was intentional. I do think the porch may have been. But regardless, luckily, we had, you know, the as-built plans, well, not as-built, you know, the approved zoning plans where the front porch was to remain. So, we have all the dimensions we need, and that will be reinstalled in the same location and dimensions, same material, so.
I wonder what that's going to look like.
Well, I kind of walked through with the contractor how he proposed to do that, and it was pretty similar to what happened at 506. They're going to do AZAC columns and kind of frame around it and reinstall the old glass and woodwork that was there. It's still going to be an unconditioned space.
In your view, Kevin, are there, are there, do we have reason to hope that this sort of thing will not happen again in the future? Now that we have a preservation order?
Yeah, I think I mentioned it a while ago. I think 500 Dudley was really the last of, will catch everyone's attention, because now we would preserve that. I'm saying our eyes weren't on 500, because they were. It just happened a day or an hour that we weren't there. So, I don't think demolition is going to get allowed to happen so quickly. I mean, that house was down in a day and a half. Yeah, I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it very much.
You got it.
Let's then move to the review of the July minutes. Adam, thank you very much for sending those to us. They arrived shortly after our meeting. You might not recall, but you've had them for quite a while. So, I'd like to ask if anyone has any comments or corrections to the minutes that Adam has submitted to us. We're being on a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So, move.
Second, are you all in favor of approving your minutes as submitted? As you can, it's on the website. Thank you again, Adam, for turning those around. We'll move then to the Salvo, review and recommendation on the County Planning Commission draft. I will turn it over to Chloe Moore, who will fully reconsider everything that's happened, what's changed, and what you'd like us to focus our conversation on tonight.
Sounds good. Jim, do you have the ability to enable participation in the screen sharing?
Let's see.
Let's ask it. I circulated a three-page memo to the planning commission as well as a, something along the line of a hundred-page draft of the Salvo to the planning commission. There were not hard copies of either of these things circulated, I don't think, so I'll just type things on the screen. I'll just get started. We discussed this Alvo extensively at the July 11th planning commission meeting. At the council meeting, it was a week later, discussed this with them, thank you. And the upside of that was basically that staff and council would like to have something to adopt this fall at some point. And so, we're moving towards a draft document that can be adapted in the next few months. Still some stages left to go through. So, some decisions were made about various issues that were brought up to either deal with them now, stick in the company zoning revision now, or save for, okay, we're going to adopt this now, and we're going to address these issues in a more relaxed way. It doesn't feel like pushing it through, or we have time to discuss some sort of things afterwards. So, the summary of this document, and this is various changes that were made since you last saw this previously in July, we decided on basically four company zoning changes that will try to adapt in a similar timeframe, maybe not identical to the Salvo adoption. And then, future work could include any or all of these things. I know there was a question about some sort of environmental impact study or historic impact study. That's an interesting conversation we can have. Various other things that were brought up by this group and in other places that we can continue to discuss on the drive after that. And then, other zoning-related updates that will happen in the future include a number, a number of different things. And then, I had four things I wanted to make sure we, at the moment, should address.
Change mailing address on order.
Ira, can you mute, please?
Michelle, are you there?
There you go. Okay, thanks very much. One of the issues that came up with council is related to the tentative sketch plan phase. Something we discussed previously here, that I wanted to make sure we just touched on today. Here, this is the actual draft Salvo. There's all kinds of requirements for what someone has to submit if they would like to have the tentative sketch plan phase of the process happen, which is going to be actual. I'm sure, I don't mean to tell any of you that there's lots of benefits to both the borough and applicant to complete that phase. So, there's a little bit of a balance needed to strike there in terms of trying to encourage people to do it, make it easy, make it not too expensive, you know, try to, try to get people to want to do that phase of the process, but still making it useful and not a waste of time for all of you. So, requiring enough information submitted that it's, you have enough to go on and to discuss. So, that's kind of, kind of what came up here, and there was the issue of finances came up at council, too. So, purposes, there's what's actually required to submit photographs, a location plan. And it does say it does not need to be a surveyed or engineered plan, but there has to be some sort of a plan document showing what it is going over to.
Chloe, I'm wondering, or the commission, would you feel it more useful if Chloe screenshared the actual Salvo?
That's what I'm screenshotting. Oh, no, it didn't. I thought, sorry. I switched to that on my screen, but it didn't switch to that for you. So, I'm really glad you said that, because that was my intention.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, here we are. So, this is, this is the draft Salvo. And the sketch plan submission, applicable, it's voluntary, submitted at the stage, it has no legal standing, which is great for warrants. There we go. Control lines, potential for owner management facilities, narrative information. So, it would be possible to try to cut this down a little bit, one possibility was, would be to not ask the applicant at the tentative sketch plan phase whether their property is within the historic district, and whether they'll need a search to get it appropriateness, and just have, you know, when Kevin reviews it, he can say, "Hey, just so you know, it's in the historic district." Same thing here, control lines, do you want the control lines at this phase? Or do you want to say, "Yeah, it's okay, you can do those later?" So, I think here that, you know, this is kind of up to your recommendation at this phase. Do you want to try to make it easier? Do you want to take out any of this required information? Or do you want to leave it all in, or add to it, or anything else? And then, the other thing is, I mean, this is, it's a matter of council, but I think they're very interested in your recommendation in terms of, do you want to say what levels of review this goes through? In terms of zoning officer, the engineer, solicitor, other possible consultants or bodies, or, you know, whether you want to make recommendations about that? And whether it actually goes in the code or just stay out? So, any recommendations related to the tentative sketch plan phase?
I'll make a recommendation.
Yes, please.
I suggest we think of the tentative sketch plan as a cartoon of the non-technical diagrammatic representation of what the, of what the proposer has in mind, just in the most technical terms. That would obviate any engineering, it would obviate surveys and topographic information, and a lot of the, a lot of the sort of underpinnings of a technical review that is for the applicant expensive and not all that elucidating for us when we look at this thing. What we want to know is, at the tentative sketch plan phase, are you crowding the site? Are you overbuilding the site? Are you building a, you know, a giant tower that we're all going to regret in the morning? That sort of stuff, simple stuff. That's enough. And we do want to encourage people to avail themselves of the opportunity to, to start out, put their best foot forward and start out on a positive note with this body and with our engineering consultants, but not to the extent that it's an exhaustive, technical affair. That's my opinion.
Jim, when you refer to cartoon set, are you including an elevation of the building?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, if that, if that goes to, to explain the concept, because we're, we're at a very conceptual level in my, in my understanding of the tentative sketch plan. It's tentative, you know, nobody's guaranteeing anything. But you're, you're putting forward a general idea of what your plan is. I want to build a house, it's going to look like this. And it's going to have, you know...
And just to clarify one thing, there's not, no longer going to be a vote by the planning commission at the tentative sketch plan phase. It's just going to be a dialogue. So, if you were going to have to vote on something, that's a good reason to require a lot of more detailed information, but since there's not going to be a vote as such, you have a little more flexibility in what you want to require.
Yep, go ahead, Adam.
I agree with Jim, and I think we can summarize it as a general site plan. And optional would be, recommend of the elevations. It's for diagrammatic. Let's just have a conversation around why we're some point.
So, Jim, your thrust of your comment is to ease up on the requirements. The thrust of your comment is to ease up on the requirements.
Yeah.
On this list.
Emphasize the conceptual, you cannot say cartoonish quality that will bring everybody to a general understanding of what the plan is. The elevations are important. Is it a, is it a, is it a house with a pitch roof? It looks like, it looks like its neighbors, or not?
Let's play out here, since no one else is, let's play out our ideas. So, you, I think it all centers around what questions are worth discussing at this level, right? What conversations we have at this point, right? And so, what do you need to have that conversation? So, a couple of questions. I don't think you mentioned, but we just began, except for anything, so we would like to know how site is accessed, right?
I can't hear you with that fan doing...
Oh, sorry.
It's still a fan, shall we talk to me any good, any...
Another question might be, how's the site going to be accessed?
Yeah.
So, we would like a circulation bubble, right?
Well, it needs a site plan.
Yeah. You said, like, there could be a pre-sthematic site plan, but it certainly needs a site plan.
Yeah. And I think we could also ask for site photos.
Yes. Things like those are, you know, easy these days.
Yeah, we can, I mean, yeah, we may as well just sort of, because again, it helps with discussion of the site conditions.
Right, especially if they're not going to do any survey, having actual photos of the site.
Yeah, trees, watercourses, going.
Access, I mean, so, I'm just looking at specifically what's drafted in here. Photos, that seems fine. It says that a basic plan sheet, introductory information does not need to be surveyed or engineered. This is all kind of written in, in optional language here. It says, is recommended that a tentative sketch plan show the following information, that it says, "Plan sheets or other documents that show," north corner scale, and it has a recommended scale. I mean, that language is okay with that? It's okay? Jim, I think you could drag the people over to the left.
Cool, so I agree. I'm sorry, can you scroll a little further?
Yes. Right, it's on here.
Well, so, it doesn't say I have three options, right?
Well, it did, yeah.
Sort of implies you have to have all this documentation.
Sorry. You're doing great, thank you.
Sorry.
I know you're playing two roles here. Appreciate you, Jim.
Can't move it.
I don't want to move anymore. Just, oh, no, it won't go.
Ira's getting smaller and smaller.
I'm getting a lot of airtime to my listening.
So, let's talk about a couple of things here that we can't see, Jim.
Do that for the moment.
Do you feel this, do you, Adam, since you're kind of leaning thinking this here, do you, do you feel the drawings should be scaled? That's number, that's number three.
No, you know, you could put scaled site plan and elevations. I don't think that's on our list, but I think what you could do is say, you know, you can have these optional elements. You're welcome to bring all these drawings, and we recommend this scale or whatever, but it's to the point about what is the purpose? The purpose is like a heads-up between the applicant and the planning commission, right? Before you spend a lot of money on design.
Right, and it's to get feedback and suggestions and, and really to surface pressure points that might emerge, you know?
Yeah, it's a conversation.
Yeah, I would want to evaluate. I don't know, do we need the quantitative takeoffs, area, square feet? We need to know the number of lots, 20 minutes total. I mean, those are more zoning particulars. Is that the level we are looking for? I think, Jim, you suggested contour lines, not necessary.
Well, I guess for me, the question is, what's the nature of this conversation? If it's a guy that come in and said, "Gee, well, I'm sort of thinking about putting an addition on a building, and it's not this big, and it sort of looks a little bit like this, but I can't tell you, you have the square footage, and I don't really know the scale." For a guy like me, there's nothing to talk about without that information. You know, it's, it's, it's just too general.
Would an addition to a building come to the planning commission?
I'm sorry?
That wouldn't come to the planning commission anyway, would it?
Oh, sure.
An addition to a building?
No, an addition to the building.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
It might affect it or not.
A project, for a project that come before us. If you make it, if you make it too generalized, then, yeah, at least from my, my worldview, you need a certain amount of specificity, specificity to have a meaningful conversation, even on a generalized basis.
Just a reminder, we talked about CGs or something.
Um, narrative information required. Really, I think, you know, the ones that would make it easier would be to remove, I mean, I mean, district itself, like, you could take out any of these things.
Yeah, I don't think I'm asking for anything on this, that a, that a drawing needs to scale.
No, I don't think that's a reasonable at all. I mean, that's sort of like a basic tenet of producing a drawing, is that it's scaling from north to east, and you can see the context and the scale of the side and the scale of the building itself, not look for construction documents, not looking for even materials, which I think it's pretty hard to conceptualize a building without knowing what you're building with, but it happens, you've seen it enough.
An architectural elevation is actually not listed in the current draft as something that's recommended. So, I can add that as a recommended item, that's fine. And I... that's recommended. So I can add that as a recommended item. That's fine. And I, I plan for this conversation to make it at least some of these items here that it's recommended, but rather than required, because of the word, but I don't know if there's certain items, like Sunday, a comment that you want to make required.
I think some things that might drive it to be a little more intensive than just to sort of, here's a sketch is, is the choppa, although these days that's like, just like built in anymore, isn't it? And then the, um, um, you know, some of the quantitative things, like maybe you could show where you think your stormwater management facility is going to be, but the approximate land area, like if you measure it, that, that seems excessive. And then an interesting question, you really want to know the number of units and the square footage of the units and all that, like this, which, which is deep, building footprint, floor area, building units. That's the stuff that begins to generate work. So is that?
But it seems to me, it's a chicken and that kind of thing. If the property owner does not know that basic information, how can he even begin to produce the, the conceptual drawings? He has to have some idea of what he wants to do.
Certainly the number of units, the land area, you have to have that information. In fact, you can look that up on, on, on Google, get that information.
Maybe leave numbered lots and dwelling units, but take out like.
I mean, is, is the purpose, is the purpose of this to make it basic enough that, that the, the property owner does not need to hire a professional for this level review? Is that what the?
That's kind of up to you. I mean, you know, you could try to make it so that the smart, aged, even property owner could sort of manage more or less themselves to bring something in without hiring anyone, if, if that's your goal.
Well, it's not. I'm just, I was wondering if it was your goal.
No, I mean, not necessarily. And part of this is going to be, okay, we're going to have to try something and then see if we get dozens of people with back of the envelope sketches that are driving us crazy, or nobody is submitting a tentative sketch plan and we want to make it easier. So.
All presentations must be made on the front side of the envelope.
I'm drawing on the back. So, I mean, you know, we can discuss this for a long time and then decide in a year that we need to change it and that probably will happen anyway.
Have a tentative phase if it's the same as the next phase, right?
Right. It should be less onerous than the next phase, which it is already in this draft. So maybe I'll remove mention of contour lines and topography, leave the rest of this stuff mostly in here and encourage an architectural elevation, if you can manage it.
Yeah. Would you leave the word architectural out of it? Call it conceptual elevation.
The word elevation is used in three different ways.
Like.
Picture. How about picture?
Okay. I'm just trying to distinguish from the other uses of the word.
Well, then you could describe it as like, you know, a, a drawing of the primary building facade.
Sure.
If you don't like the word elevation.
Right. I believe we call it sketch.
Sketch.
Are we close enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Like Chloe said, we'll find out whether it's too much or too little. And I hesitate to stir things up more, but any applicant can always ask. It's voluntary. It's like, it's like, I'm not going to submit that. We still, no one's going to.
Please still review it. And you could say no, but.
So I think, I think it'll work out. I do.
Are you comfortable with these items in here? Zoning district? Can any known zoning be needed? Anticipated waivers? Historic information? Or do you want to take some of those out of the case?
I think if they know, me and me, that's okay. If they don't, that's okay too.
Okay.
You say if no.
If no. Okay, sure.
Can I ask a general question? This entire phase is optional. Do they have the option of submitting a partial? No, like, like if they just want to show us a segment of these things, like what, what's the point of requirements for an optional phase? I mean.
Right. I mean, yeah, maybe. I mean, it would be okay for the borough staff to say, you didn't give us enough to review this, the planning commission is going to be a waste of everybody's time. So please do a little bit more. But that's, you know, there would, would also be the action, could probably give direction to the staff to say, we'd like to see everything. If someone brings in something, show, you know.
So it's optional on our end too.
Right. I think so. If you have requirements and they don't meet those requirements, it doesn't mean you can't talk to them. It's not like the code prohibits you from having a conversation. Okay.
Since this is voluntary and this is not legislatively required, can you simply just leave this and say, borough staff can waive any of these requirements if, in judgment they're not necessary? Since it's not, it's, it's not like required by the state, by the MPO, can, can the council just delegate from the staff? Like, here's the list of things, but if staff says it doesn't make sense, you don't have to submit it, then we avoid.
That seems possible, but I want to run that one by John Walker, but normally, you know, staff has not delegated any sort of approval.
They're not, they're not approving anything. You're just saying.
And you're not approving anything either when it comes here.
Right. That's what I mean. This is a leading go decision. It's not required by state law. It's not governed by state law. It's a procedure we're doing. So maybe the borough.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I just fill out there that if you just say, these are optional recommended components, it gets the job done and people can bring as much as they, as the project wants. And the conversation will be as high of quality as based on what you bring.
Right, right.
Sound good. Worked that.
Okay, what's next, Chloe?
Okay. General principles and requirements. Most of this is very similar to what you've saw previously, but I was asked if we could add a little bit of language around, additional language around stormwater management in particular, which I attempted to do here. That's showing, yes. Let me just zoom in bigger. So this, this is new. And if you have anything back on this paragraph, and if you have a chance to review it, you're there. Just wanted to make sure. This is a, this is an important piece. General principles and requirements.
So we're looking at number two?
Yes. And I'm going to move on, but it's implicit. Everybody's reading it. So I'll just pause for a second.
Okay.
Anybody want to comment on this one?
Hard to read. Yeah, it's good.
Um, and then.
One second.
I'm sure, sorry.
Does it adequately capture the safety element of stormwater flooding issues? I know it talks about naturalizing and water table and so on, but I just don't see the word flood anywhere.
Sustainable flood management.
I just, you might think about getting that word a little bit, like, or that runoff a little more than it does. Because the fundamental issue is the rain is getting more intense. And there's going to be, whatever the map says, whatever the pass says, you're, you're getting multiple inches of rain now. And we've got to find, we have to mitigate that.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. I think it is possible to say a little more about safety and flooding.
Yeah, kind of near the beginning, actually, I think. But anyway.
Okay. And the other one is the, so this is number two under a section that talks about urban form and developments should contribute to reducing any negative climate change impacts originated from that. I'm not sure that language is ungood. And then this whole paragraph is new. When you travel your net carbon sequestration.
Could we say reduction, not sequestration? Sequestration means storage of carbon. I mean, I don't know that's what the typical development would do. Right? It should be like net carbon reduction.
Okay. I mean, I think that the PAC would say net zero.
Is that the same as carbon neutral?
I mean, this is something that needs to be clearly defined because it's often used interchangeably, carbon neutral, net carbon zero, and all of that type of language. So in our glossary of terms, perhaps we make it abundantly clear exactly what and how to achieve these goals, what the goals are and how to achieve them.
I would say when it gets down to word smithing at that level, the PAC is going to take a whack at this anyway. So I'm not sure it's worth our time.
Right. I'd be very glad to have their input on this one.
Because we will not have the last minute. So let's let the experts.
Okay. If you have trouble with that on this, let me know. Keep up with some fabulous wording later. Okay. And moving on. So this is just two sentences that were added to this red pairing corridor management section. I just wanted to point them out because there is significant answer, uh, policy change here. It says, if the water course, so if the water course is located in a development site, it shall remain open in its natural state. It shall not be piped or channelized. That was already in there. If the water course is already channelized, this is the new language, it shall be restored to a natural state in any, in unobstructed areas that are at least 10 feet away from sidewalk streets, existing property lines or existing buildings. So if you have some kind of a water thing on your development site, which does not apply to very many places in NARV, and it's not close to the property lines, the sidewalks or the street, you have to naturalize the channel. And anything that's already in a pipe all the way enclosed is not required to be restored to its natural state. So only if it's, um, channelized with some sort of artificial barrier of, you know, barriers. And I'm not sure this wording was perfect either, in the intent.
So from a practical standpoint, that means the channelized stream bed, stream in NARV Park should be returned, the portion of it that is in a, that's between two stone walls should be returned to a natural stream bed.
If it's ever developed.
If that's ever developed, if that ever comes through subdivision.
Yeah.
And it would apply on three elements, which is unlikely now that that will come through development because like it's likely to be preserved.
Could be, it could be returned to a natural well, like preserve, which is the highest and best use of it. Now that's what happens. And it would be great to return that to a natural stream. And we have volunteers standing by to do that work.
So this would apply to any situation like that where there's a land development. So this is just in case any of those sites is ever developed. Who knows what will happen after we leave the planning commission. But in those situations where there's room to do it, it has to be restored.
Right. And again, this is new thought, though. If someone has some compelling argument as to why that can't be possible, it can get waived. But this is just a new, new language that's, that was sort of significant so much. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to make sure to go over is this sidewalk and planting strip section. So let's just go there. It's changed a lot over the times that we've been discussing this. Um, let's see. That's pretty similar. Um, so Jim, Spirit had requested this section related to accommodating existing mature trees in a planting strip, allowing the development to have the sidewalk go around. And I think that language works, but on the sidewalk one. And then we ended up deciding in downtown district, in five A, the sidewalk is greater than five feet additional width beyond five feet can be used for these items here. Tables, where we ended up with this, these requirements, which you saw this before, but just the only thing that changed is just to clarify, send people to look at the zoning ordinance here, just to make that crystal clear. And if there's an existing planting strip that's greater than this, that they have to finish that. This is, um, the other, these changed slightly. I don't know if anyone wants to get into that, but also it was related right away in car with it. So comments or questions about streets, sidewalks, planting strips?
That looks good.
Okay. And then any other, oh, I was asked to just mention the, how we handle the substantial revision that can be counted as a new submission versus just a resubmission. So just to review, an applicant submits a preliminary plan, it comes in for review, and then, then for whatever reason, based on comments or their own issues, they decide to re revise the plan. In many cases, a resubmission, uh, there's, there's still a nine, a total limit of 90 days for the borough to make a final decision on that project. And so they can resubmit something and it has to be reviewed within that 90 day period. Um, we're attempting to add to this although, a provision such that they can, the borough has the option to say, hey, you've revised this plan so much that we are going to call it a new submission, start the 90 day con over, require additional fees potentially, and give ourselves more time to review it. And so kind of worked that in. There's a request to have a little more clarity about what that exactly meant. So the way that was handled, some guidance on how that would be, how that would be decided, what's a new submission, substantial revision as it comes to new submission versus just a revision. And after conversations with Samantha and Eric, we ended up with this definition of a substantial revision that could be, sorry, I'm going to scroll here. It could be a new, it would be deemed a new submission by the borough staff, um, as, so a plan, a resubmission of a plan that has been significantly changed, including but not limited to changes in size, number, location of buildings, changes in number of lots, increase or decrease in the number of dwelling units, or changes in land uses or building types. And the, the thought from borough staff was that keeping this fairly general will give them the option to, to send something back as a new plan or not. It doesn't, it doesn't require them to just say, okay, that they added one more dwelling unit to this apartment building. It's, it's actually, okay, it's pretty similar to the last submission. It can still, it can be considered a regular resubmission rather than a substantial revision. So that's, this kind of went around a bunch. And, and it's going to end up mostly being Kevin who makes that call when he gets a revision of something and say, gosh, this is really different. We need new reviews. We need more time versus, okay, this is just a, you know, they've just clarified here or something, you know, the engineer asked them to mark this on the plan. That's a big one to that. It's just a revision.
Seems reasonable. I want to get in Kevin's much. Is your version on this slide seem possible?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? Yes, talk.
I think we emailed you a comment about bicycle parking the other day.
Yes.
Were we able to address that? This came from Jim. For everyone's reference, Jim, why don't you tell us what you recommended? For everyone's reference, Jim, why don't you tell us what you recommended?
I sat down with a couple of members of the bicycle club. And the result of that sitting down is more to the search.
I liked the email version. It was more paragraph.
Okay, all right. They feel that the requirements for bicycle parking should be greater. We should have something more like space for two bicycles per unit. And that threshold should be for any multi-unit development, three or more. That's short enough.
That's.
So the other thing they, they looked into separately from this was the standards for Santa Monica, which were, which are based on the number of bedrooms. I believe it's like half. For every two bedrooms, you need one bicycle storage spot. That would be a competing.
Sounds like you're familiar with that, Adam. Pardon? Sounds like you're familiar with that.
Well, I think that, you know, the logical thing is the minimum of two per unit and a ratio related to the number of bedrooms. That's the perfect formula.
Is that something at this late date you can accommodate?
So I have, I have two things to say about that and also a piece of paper to give you, which I forgot about completely until you asked this question, which is that I had a number of conversations with my colleagues about bicycle parking in a map, some great resources that I am sifting through. But one key comment is that bicycle parking minimums should go in zoning, not in the SADO. We put them in the SADO partly because there were none in zoning when we were writing the SADO. And because it's better than nothing. But the actual parking minimums for vehicles are in the zoning. And, and I think my colleagues strongly recommend to put the, the number of spaces in the zoning rather than in the SADO. So the design requirements about where they're located and how they function can go in the SADO and that's appropriate. But the, the reason to put them in zoning is that there's lots of things that happen that don't trigger the SADO, that do trigger the parking requirements in zoning. And I think you want to also trigger the bicycle parking requirements there.
So fair enough. Can we add that to the list of shorter zoning changes since it's pretty simple?
That reminds me, the other general request was to not base number of bike, bicycle parking spaces on the number of car parking spaces.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, a minimum number of. Ratio. So I think we can just figure that out and add it to the zoning. Because it's, there's only going to be one paragraph somewhere.
I'll put this up on the screen in a second, but I'm just telling you what I'm giving you, which is that the first three pages are more or less a draft of the key zoning amendments that are going to accompany this SADO revision. The first one is the. I'm unclear of them. And then the remaining five pages are a work in progress on bicycle parking. There's more I want to do with this because I, I'm still looking at a number of interesting resources and I want to get that left. But I wanted to give you what I had so far. There's a couple of general resources. And if you want to see some of the original, you know, model, national model ordinances that I've now collected, I'm happy to send those to you as well as taken from them in some cases. So I'm just standing with you, eight pages worth of things. Take a little look.
So are you saying this bicycle parking, all this page four through eight? Do you think one day you did in the zoning code?
Uh, no. I think that this first, so on what.
Okay, so page four would go in zoning. Starting on page four, we're going to the SADO.
So most of page four would go in zoning. This, this table, it's the kind of thing you already have for vehicle parking. Go in the zoning. There's this possibility of doing some kind of vehicle parking credits. If they put in a lot of good bike parking, that's something you can consider if you want to. And then starting at the bottom, there's some design items that can go in the SADO related to placement and location, et cetera. Then there's these other things that I don't know if you want to include, and I don't know where to put them if you do, which is related to removal of abandoned bicycles that might go in some other section of code entirely that's not zoning or SADO. And then there's a bunch of definitions which probably most, we don't need to go in both. And again, this is a work in progress. I'm not sending, giving you this final. I think it's ready to adapt. This is me having looked at some of this stuff and going, huh, okay, great. Let's see, this might work.
So to be clear, pages one through three
Yes.
is a list of zoning changes that when we had our staff meeting, we decided were essential to make relatively concurrently with the SADO to avoid conflicts in the codes.
Correct.
That's what they're there for. They're not because we have a great, no idea.
Right.
Because we want to avoid a problem.
I mean, things that align with SADO, and that's, the definitions are not included in here.
Right. So that's why those are on page one through three. They're not substantive changes. They're just aligning two codes. Pages four through eight are proposed new code for bicycles. Page four largely is for zoning. And starting at the very bottom of page four is design requirements, which would go in SADO.
And then. On page five and six.
Yeah. So what I'd like to propose is in terms of bicycle parking, I feel there's great community desire and to have this added to the code. So perhaps, Jim, you and your folks you talked to could look at this and bring back your advice.
I'm also happy to work on this off finally someone. I'd like to get back to it. I didn't have, I've not done yet.
You know, sometimes you have to say, like, why are you spending your time working on SADO? You can say like, because you have these great rules for bikes. And people go like, yeah, that's cool. Okay. You've done good work. So just a little icing on the cake for the public. So I would say, I don't think we should dig into this bicycle parking very much tonight. It's important to acknowledge that it's important to do and to be included in SADO when zoning, when we update them. And so Jim, if you wouldn't mind running these ideas for anyone applying this, run them by any kind of flight resource people you have and include as more information to others who'd like it.
You know, I think Joe just said, EAC is interested in forwarding some like interest tips or.
Okay.
That's good. I'm happy to track the end line last to talk about this later. And I'm happy to work on it to go with these other updates. You know, if it, if it ends up being a drawn out process, I wouldn't want to pull the other things up. I agree that this is important and if we can get something that people are happy with, then put it in. Let's do it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the technical zoning amendments? Anything you want to review? Can we, okay. So is there anything else about the SADO? Oh, I have one other.
No, but you had another question.
Yeah. So this just came up today when I was reading over a memo from about green building. And a tiny little thing popped out and I wondered if it needed to be addressed in the SADO as a design standard, which is design standards for on-street charging of EVs. So for example, there's a need to be a design standard for how power can go to a sidewalk. How, I don't think a private entity is going to put a charging station on the street. But just, can you just think through that and think about essentially what we have in the borough? The borough is beginning a program of installing power EVs charging. I don't think that is a SADO issue. But we do see some residents who are charging their cars on the streets and they're running cables across sidewalks. And so maybe in new construction, there's a way to build design standards so you can safely charge your car on the street. And maybe it doesn't need to be mentioned, but maybe it does.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. Thanks. There's a couple of kind of general things in here, but there's more. And also I would defer to Kevin on anything about codes and safety related to running extension cords across the street, current issues.
Seriously, don't do that.
Usually I see a little rubber strip.
Don't do that either. It doesn't really work very well with a snow blower.
Yeah. Well, in any case, if there's something to be said about that in the. And I think we are going to have requirements for EV spaces in the zoning, so we don't have to. Okay. Is there anything else? I think Chloe and her team are owed a great debt of gratitude for carrying this. Well, it's where it is. So thanks. We, so what will happen is we will, well, you'll be processing this again. I guess the next thing we'll see is the actual ordinance language, unless there's some questions that come up.
Uh, that seems likely.
And it could be as early as next month or it might be longer. Okay.
We'll let you know. Things will happen. They will move forward.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone, for your.
Thank you. Thanks for working so hard to make this so very organized and well managed this hard time tonight. All right. So let's move on to zoning issues. We have two, essentially three on the table. Revisiting green building, revisiting five B changes. And actually, you know, I should stop. I realized I didn't stop. As is our practice, we'll ask for public comment on agenda items as we move through. So I noticed there are several members of the public online. So does anybody in the public in this meeting have any comments about the SADO discussion that we've been having? Are there any public comments about that or questions? Okay. So then we will, we'll move on to zoning. We have three topics, green building, five B changes, and potentially we find Airbnb. If we get done by nine, that will make folks really happy. So I apologize for doing this at the last second, but we've been working. There's been a tremendous amount of conversation in various groups, people in the borough about zoning for green buildings. And Jen has been in the thick of it. And she and I conferred a lot over the weekend to consolidate what's been learned. And so that's why you didn't receive these new ideas until now. We've had very helpful input from the Environmental Advisory Commission, who we have to regard as sort of full partners in this effort. They tell us what's important. I think we helped translate it into code for zoning. So I think I sent the memo to you that you received, much of the memo from the EAC dealt with the concept of, if I use the word correctly, net zero building. The Environmental Advisory Committee Commission encouraged us to prioritize things that, in a green building program that would help the borough achieve its, its zero emissions goals, stated in the Climate Action Plan and policies the Borough Council has developed. Over other potential things we might have a green building code. Although the memo did say everything we suggested was valuable. So with that, Jen and I have really been honing in on this, this question of net zero building. And so what you have is the same memo I gave you in July, but it's been updated to reflect the input we received. And a focus on net zero building as, as what we would seek in, in a green building zone. So in terms of the background, and the change, if you printed it on color, all the changes are made in blue to make it more helpful. Background is really just acknowledging we received helpful and substantive input from the Environmental Advisory Commission as well as some independence, some members of Borough Council. And the, what the bonus provides, that is what is the extra stuff folks would get if they follow the green bonus, building bonus has not changed, except in one way. There is public comment and interest in the notion that accessory dwelling units should also be built to these standards that if we're giving someone the right to do this, it seemed reasonable to make that a condition of building of need to use. So that is now part of this recommendation. And that is, that's a choice point, I think, is worth us talking about and discussing whether that's a recommendation we'd like to make. But other than that, the, the upside to the applicant hasn't changed. Or what would be eligible hasn't changed. What's changed a lot is what the bonus requires. And so I had to do a little bit of stalling of myself over the weekend about what net zero building means. And using the, the CliffsNotes versions of the internet, which I admit is risky, I first recognized that this, this idea has been building for a long time. And it's actually, there have been experiments with zoning for net, build, zero building for almost a decade. Some planners have begun to grapple with this. That's interesting to learn. And that what it means is essentially three things, which I think are an umbrella that covers most of what we've talked about. But net zero building means reducing carbon inputs into, that are used in construction processes. It means maximizing the energy efficiency of new buildings. And it means whatever power is needed for a building, to source it first from onsite renewable resources, if that's possible. And then secondly, from renewable energy sources or renewable energy providers. So it means trying to maximize those three, well, optimize, let's say, not maximize. Optimize those three things. Construction practices, energy efficiency, and, and then, and then the use of renewable resources for whatever. And, and so following EAC's guidance, we would craft a green building bonus that has some way that we can measure that a project is making progress towards those goals. Yeah, not a lot different from what we have talked about, but a kind of interesting framework for holding it all together. So Jen's done a lot of legwork on this and we're continuing to do it. But so I guess, so that's the second thing that I think the planning commission should discuss. Do we agree with EAC on that priority? Is that a useful way of conceptualizing it in order to kind of actually frame out the administration of this? So we found a few different ways of developing metrics for these three bullet points. In terms of reducing carbon inputs in the construction processes, we actually, Jen and I have not found a good example of that. But today Fred Bush made some recommendations about, about what that might be. So, which, which are more, they're less, less, they're more prescriptive goals than performative goals, like use this, use that. But I think, I think our next step would be to kind of really flesh out what's the right workable metric. If we agree that reducing carbon inputs in the construction process should be part of this bonus, we would work to figure out what a workable metric is. And I'll explain that, how we would get to that in a minute. Secondly, maximizing energy efficiency of new buildings. There are a couple of energy efficiency codes out there of more or less utility, so to speak, again, to use a kind of double entendre. Energy Star, in the 2021 IEC Energy Conservation Code, or ASHRAE 2019. We could use these potentially as alternative codes that we ask a developer to apply to their building. It would be inspected and verified. And I can explain how we might inspect that and verify it. And then finally, sourcing power from onsite renewable sources or from renewable energy providers would have a couple of components. One is no use of fossil fuels. So everything would have to be electric or pedal power. On-site renewable energy production to the extent practical. I don't think it's, I myself do not like measures which say you have to have solar because there may be a better way to achieve the goal. But we're practical, onsite energy, renewable energy production, commitment to purchase all remaining energy from renewable sources. And then in the future, commitment to joining Norbert's Community Choice Aggregation for renewable electricity, which is an initiative that Borough is organizing and could be implemented in a quick or a long time. And I'm seeing questions about what that is. So I'm going to ask Jen, can you explain what the Community Choice Aggregation for renewable electricity is?
Yeah, sure. I don't have any readings here in front of me, but I'll sort of give the brief history of how this came to be. We started with a meeting over the summer, Jim Spear, you will part that, where we were talking about. where we were talking about looking into researching various ways to get Norbert onto renewable energy whole scale. Not, you know, piece by piece by piece, but how can we get everybody on board at once to start? We looked into this Brooklyn microgrid concept. It sounded interesting. It was pretty high tech. It would be kind of costly, wouldn't be the best path forward, but we got a lot of interest. Environmental Advisory Council members were present, and they were contributing. And as in sort of an offshoot of that meeting, this community, Community Choice Aggregation idea was discovered. It successfully was implemented in New York State. And the brief on it is that there is some legislative language in Pennsylvania. Now, pardon me if I'm not using the correct legal terms here, but it says townships cannot, it's illegal for townships to do community solar. But there is nowhere in the language that says a borough can't do it. So if you can get boroughs, a minimum of 30,000 residences in the state to come together to do this community choice aggregation, you will have a maximum, the maximum, minimum threshold to go solar or go renewable, whatever you're, you have to get the supply. And there's a third party who gets the supply. They're called, they're going with, we're going with a company called Jewel Community Power or something like that. And they made it happen in New York State, and they're trying to make it happen here in Pennsylvania. So they would work directly with PICO to switch over to renewable wholesale. You would, the resident would have to opt out. So it would be like an automatic, you know, we're up and running and ready to roll. The borough is willing to give a monetary incentive for people. I don't know, I don't know what the numbers are. The numbers are not totally worked out yet. But say they would be kicking in about $100 a residence for it to be washed in terms of making that transition. And according to Samantha, and, you know, I don't know if these numbers will change or what, but they have to get their, you know, budget requests in next month. I believe they've budgeted about $20,000 for the upcoming year. So I think we're going to start seeing this transition happening sooner rather than later, but over, say, about a five-year period of time. So over that time, it will be incentivized to not, you know, house maps. I'm sorry if I left anything out or if I glossed over anything, but that is, that's the gist of it.
Here's the high points, as I understand. One is, a group of boroughs are voluntarily banding together to sort of be a mass consumer of renewable energy, which they will work with this particular company and provide. Presumably, by doing so, they'll get better rates than you could if you try and buy renewable energy through PA Power Switch, which we all have the right to do. As you know, most of you, if you know, you have the right to choose your energy supplier. Doesn't have to be PICO. You can go to PA Power Switch. You can pick from dozens of companies, including renewable sources, renewable sources from PA, wind PA, you can look. There's all kinds of options. It's the complete. They've made shopping for power just one more thing we have to do.
Yeah, but just to, you know, but there are two candidates here. There's supply and there's distribution. PICO's got distribution. You can get your supply from one.
A PICO still has to. So because we have now, have had for years, the ability to buy our own, the state has set as a default for us, PICO is our supplier. So if you don't choose, you got PICO. So the second thing that'll change is, aside from the boroughs kind of banding together to deliver customers at a beneficial rate, if you live in an area that has this community choice, your default provider will be a renewable energy provider. It won't be PICO. You don't do anything, you're going to get this jewel. And it's not the smoke jewel, right? It's a different jewel.
Jewel of energy.
You're going to get this renewable energy provider. And you can opt out. You can go back and say, I love PICO. I love that electricity. It's so good.
Cold fire.
I love watching those trains rolling and ring me by. So you can stick with PICO. You can shop for another renewable energy. You still have the right to choose whatever you want. It's just a default change. And the third leg of this is if you, if you choose to stay with this renewable energy supplier, the borough will actually give you a subsidy. Give you a little check or rebate or something like that. I don't know if it's every year or once. But you'll actually get a little bit of, "Borough puts some skin in there." So that's what this is. The borough's working on this independently of anything we are talking about tonight. So what we're saying tonight is, to get the green building bonus, you as a proprietor have to opt your building in. You can opt out when the time comes for this to be. And it helps the borough because if big new developments take advantage of this, it helps us get our numbers up.
And we say, and we say as part of our green framework, it is, you must opt in. If you opt out, you do not get any, any bonus.
So that's, that's, that's one of the parts of that leg of renewable energy. So first is no fossil fuels. Second is, to the extent possible, generate on site. Third is purchase renewable. And the fourth is, when we have this community system set up, you agree to remade it or participate. And so that is the third leg. So these are the three legs. So in that, I mean, there's a lot to work out. There's a lot to work out in terms of how it's administered, how it's documented, how it's measured, and how it's enforced. And we all know, we had a conversation beginning in the meeting about enforcement. A lot of the emails I've read about this topic include comments by Kevin and Eric about their experiences in other municipalities that they've learned. So we're all aware of the challenges here. But what I propose is, it's not our job to solve that. It's our job just to flag it. And that the people who can solve that are the borough staff, the solicitor, who will be charged with managing enforcement. And so I think we set policy direction. And those particular details, we let them, we let them work out. There are some ideas in this, in this memo about how that could happen. Some of it, but I will again, I would again, use that as a starting point for conversation with the borough's staff and solicitor. I think, I think, for example, it will require some level of independent verification through an examiner like Kevin, you know, someone who can replan and certify things, which may have to be a consultant, which the applicant may have to pay for, if they want to participate in this. So there's a lot of details in here which are provided more as a starting point for conversation with the staff. In general, so I think what we are, and then there's a special exception provision, but I want to hold that off for a second. So I guess what we're looking for tonight, Jen and I, are your guidance on this framework. As we look at green building, it's focusing on net zero buildings the proper priority, since we've been guided to that. Secondly, does it make sense to you to break it down into these three components? Management of, you know, construction processes to minimize carbon inputs. The, some metric to drive energies to become more, buildings to become more energy efficient. And then third, the use of renewable energy. Does that make sense to you too? That there's some way that, something that has to meet all those thresholds? I think those are really the questions. And then if you feel that is a good framework for policy, then what would happen is, I invite you to come to council Thursday and tell them what we think. And if council is agreeable to this framework, then someone from Planning Commission, probably me and Jen, someone from the EAC, someone from the borough staff, solicitor, and council member would really try to hash this out to figure out, how does it really work? That's the real, we can come up with a policy idea, but how it really works is where it fits. So I guess what I'm hoping is we can talk about those key policy points and see if that's a good direction to take.
Just your new construction?
Yes, that's where we'd start. Because it's a bonus. I would say, I was surprised when I started reading about this, how many cities are actually building this into the base, like any construction? Big cities, San Jose, amazingly, Boston, that's a third big one, that's another big one. I forget. But this is, this is actually becoming slowly a norm as a basic building requirement out of zoning. I mean, there are places that do this through bonuses, but it's actually being incorporated into base beds. So down the road, I think this is a good chance to see what the options and kinks are. And then maybe one day in the next several years, the borough could look to this being more expanded to renovations. I don't know, I don't know how that works, so this is a place to start.
But does this, does this prevent the use of the gas generator on someone's project with an emergency basis?
I can't say. We'll just have to flag that as a question. Can you use an emergency generator?
We got a lot of gas, gas-fired residential infrastructure in Norbert. My own house is gas. Heat, hot water, but all electric and all my electric comes from wind power.
Yeah.
I think. I am told. I have feet. Whenever the wind blows, I notice my light bulbs are just a little bit, I don't have light bulbs. My LEDs are just a little brighter.
Yeah, I've had, I've never conversed, I mean, I think that it's likely that people with existing houses will be far along getting incentives to convert their houses, either through the Inflation Reduction Act or other means.
Well, my house has two 400 amp serves, which is adequate to run it as presently configured. If I were an all-electric house, I would be 400 amp service. And there ain't no bonus program that's going to pay for a 400 amp service from my house.
Just as a side note, not that we're ready to take this head on at all at this point, but in the process of researching and gathering all this information, I did read through the Inflation Reduction Act and what they're, you know, what they're promising as incentives to go green. And it's very impressive. And I think that, you know, they've got sort of like a tiered system where you reach this, you get this, 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 and, you know, upwards of a $5,000 cap on rebates. And I think, you know, it'll be, it'll take effect in January of 2023. And not that I was trying to coordinate, but I wanted somehow to catch sort of like, how intense is this? And it's pretty intense. Geothermal, solar, wind, HVAC, you know, ASHRAE, everything for us.
So let's stick with bonuses for new construction. Does that, does anyone have any questions or concerns or thoughts about that framework we've laid out or suggestions you'd like to make?
Yeah, what are the bonuses?
Okay, I'll review that.
As I understand from reading the materials that were distributed, the concept is to dial back the zoning code to where we were in terms of floor areas and so forth, to where we were before the Form 8 code was enacted.
To an earlier phase of Form Mexico. I mean, to read you the exact.
Let's explain that, because I don't quite understand that.
So this would, the bonuses would vary by district. As you know, let's start with 5A. As you know, the buildings are not limited to 25 feet and two stories in most of the 5A district. So in the 5A district, with this bonus, buildings could achieve a third story and a 35-foot height, which is where things were until two years ago. So really, that would restore what was in the original Form 8 code. Jim, I'm very mindful that you, one thing you said was, we don't want to give more density than the Form 8 code originally did. Right? So that's been baked in here. On Windsor Avenue, you know, you'll know we, some time ago, increased your average height to four stories and 45 feet. And so the, as of right now, it would be reduced to three stories and 35 feet. And you can only get the fourth story through this bonus. So it would take us back to what was original, but you could get what's existing now. So again, nothing more than the code. 5B district, interestingly, 5B district buildings aren't limited to three stories, but they can be 45 feet tall. So in 5B district, you would be allowed to have a 45-foot building, but you could also have four stories. You have an extra story within the envelope that you're already permitted. So that would be 5B. 3A, 3B, and 3C, a little more creative. You'll recall, there's that provision that the average facade size of a block, the new facade can be 115% of a, of the average facade size of a block. So you sort of, there's an increase baked into the code. And so the proposal here is, as of right, you can have 100% facade. You can't increase the side sides over what is the average of the block currently. But you can get to 115%, which we allow now if you create a green building. So in those cases, we're reducing things, we actually, you know, that are sort of increases in a certain way, and bringing people back up to what the baseline is. Nothing more than what is allowed now or used to be allowed in the case of 5B. So that's what's left. And then ADUs is a type of instruction we just recently allowed, was never allowed before. And so, and this is another point for us to discuss. There is public sentiment that ADUs should also be followed the green building requirements, if we'd be allowed. You know, maybe as a matter of practicality, it's simpler to achieve, it's a smaller building, but there's a sentiment that if they're giving people this ability, it should be a green building. So that's, that's where the bonus would apply.
I guess I have a basic question about this, and I'm not sure any of us here are qualified to answer. And I only have a very rudimentary, layman's idea of what the legal concept of a taking is. But given the fact that we have standards in the existing zoning code that we're not now dialing back to get them back to where they would be as a bonus, could a property owner can ensure that as a taking? Like if a property owner bought, bought a piece of land, a property based on what the zoning code says, and now we're changing that and dialing it back to what they can do on it? Is that a fundamental problem with this concept?
I think that's a question for the solicitor.
I figured it would be, but it's such a basic question, we'd probably lose the feeling on it.
Yeah.
Before we get very far.
I think we should pose it to the solicitor. I don't think we are experts.
I didn't imagine we'd have an answer tonight.
Yeah, I would hope the solicitor would ask that question every day he works on the zoning code. But that's a point well taken. So we'll ask him.
You know, reading this thing, folks, it occurred to me that we have set up with this idea a contest between different ideologies. And that makes me uncomfortable. I'm 100% in favor of maximum energy efficiency, energy independence and all that. But how about a tax break? Why trade the harder-won features of a very sophisticated zoning code?
Okay, is that a question?
That we have, this is a question.
Yeah.
This is the question in my mind. Why trade those when there are other mechanisms to achieve the same goal?
It's not clear whether tax breaks are a mechanism to achieve this goal.
Well, let's get some clarification on that, because this is, this is throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
But when you say it's not clear, is that because there's not a, there's not enough of a track record of it being used that way, or is there some other?
It's not clear what state law will permit the borough to do.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, I've always been under the impression that, um, state does not allow, there's certain provisions in state constitution that don't allow property taxes to be assessed at different rates for different people. However, we all know the borough's been passing property tax breaks for first responders or volunteer firefighters. Uh, that's, so that's a lot. And I read an article earlier this year about a new state law that allows for, um, for the first time ever, really encouraging afford some sort of affordable housing property tax break. Um, so I passed that information on to the borough manager with the request that we look to see where this tool comes from and whether it can be applied in other cases. So, since the moment, we don't know. I mean, it, it could be a function of state law, but state legislature said you can adjust your property tax rates for firefighters and affordable housing. That's it. We don't know. So we're looking, you know, I, I think, I think for a whole number of reasons, the borough should look to see what flexibility they have, but my understanding is there's not much.
Let's find out. So it seems like we need some opinions from the solicitor before we can get very far into this discussion.
Well, I think, I think you could, you could say, you know, assuming there aren't other tools like tax breaks and assuming it's legal, uh, we support this idea or we don't support this idea. Um, and we're bringing it to you because at the moment, we don't believe there's a tax break rule. Um, and obviously, the solicitor at some point will have to weigh in on how to make it. If the solicitor really, you know, my hope is the solicitor would say, well, if this is the policy the borough wants, how could it be made in a way that could work, if it depends? So we just need to work with the solicitor. I'm far more actually concerned about whether it could actually be managed administratively. It's complicated. And how do you find these metrics? And I think thankfully Kevin and Eric, from emails I've been reading, have experience with this. And so they'll have a lot to offer. And Samantha, uh, Bryant, the borough manager, seems very eager to give it a go. If this is what direction she receives from council.
So I, I for one would like to hear a lot more about how the enforcement is actually implemented. I, you know, I, I know, you know, I, I appreciate what you said before, that that's not really our, our venue here. But on the other hand, if we're going to spend a bunch of hours talking about this, I'd like some reassurance that it's not going to fail in the enforcement end of it. And I'd like some, some more concrete ideas of how the enforcement happens. And whether one path is more successful by virtue of how the enforcement happens in another path, than just to assume, well, it doesn't matter because they'll take care of it. Because I, I gotta say.
Jen and I and the EAC, council and staff would get together to figure this, this out.
Well.
So.
I understand, appreciate hearing how, how it gets figured out.
Well, you will, but first, I guess what, you know what? I'm hopeful is we can get a signal that it's worth looking into.
I'm sure it's certainly worth looking into.
I don't want to speak for everybody, but I'm kind of certain that everybody is in favor of the general concept. I mean, how we get there is much more complicated, but the idea of, of, of having a green energy policy in the borough, I think is kind of a no-brainer.
He comments on the other side of the table. Sorry, man.
This is the left side.
This is the other left side.
All right. Right.
I think I'm skeptical of whether tax breaks could, you know, could incentivize something like this. But at least, you know, once you get everybody doing what you want them to do, that could put a serious friction in revenue, you know, in borough. Um, and it encourages people to think of it as just a dollar trade-off, you know, if you get a couple hundred dollars back from the borough in return for putting, it sounds like thousands more into your construction. That's, no, if it's a strict dollar calculation, that's not hard.
Well, it's more complicated than, than there's the, what's the energy savings on, on doing the ENO strategies over what period of time you want, do you want the payback to be?
Presumably, it's, the, the, the energy savings themselves over time won't be tomorrow, of course, but over the long haul, the energies, the energy savings by themselves will defray a lot of the, of the construction costs. Look at Whiteboard's house, for example, with his solar array. I don't know the numbers, but I remember him saying that it, that it has rapidly paid, paid itself back. I'd love to hear what the actual facts are there. But he did that on his own and, as, as I understand it, very comfortable with the, with the results.
I mean, what, what problems are there? Someone to encourage to side the table about.
I think we should keep going if, if identified some of the challenges, including, as you said, can we administer this effectively? And, you know, there's a process to investigate that question, it sounds like. So, and I, I think that we, we need to drive hard now of the, you know, the building lifecycle. So let's get started.
So do you, do you like to? Hey, what?
Um, I mean, I would just say, I don't think off the bat, we should get bogged down in details of administration, though I do see why it's a concern. Um, you know, you appoint the commissioner or just think about the construction process on a job site where you have photographic evidence that's submitted to the borough and it, you know, and then you have people appointed here at the borough who can, who can oversee over time. Um, and all of that information, by the way, is, it is now commonplace to have energy, your energy model. You can have your energy model three hundred and sixty-five days a year over the next five years and tell you exactly what the input-output equation will be, how much cost savings. There's a website, um, it's called Google Solar Roof or something like that, that can tell you the viability of your roof for solar and what your cost savings could be if you wanted to make that investment. And by the way, if you want to make that investment as an individual and get your thirty percent back from the Inflation Reduction Act as of January, all the information's right there for you, just, you know, go for it. I mean, I think part of what the delay has been is accessibility to resources. What we're providing here is access. Here's your renewable. Here's how you can achieve that zero. Here, let us help you do that. All we need is a submission, we need verification, and we're here to help. We're not here to, you know, burden the process at all. We're just trying to optimize.
So Dave, what do you want to, I want to wrap this up, but I know you had another thought.
Well, I, I was just, you know, my, my thought is, in listening to that, and I'm, I'm in complete agreement, especially in the idea of making resources available to the average homeowner to be able to take advantage of some of these strategies. Where it gets, to me, exponentially more complicated is when you start thinking about things like, uh, you know, construction procedures. We have an enormously complicated area to monitor and to, to be able to ensure that it's being done to, to certain standards. I mean, there are very thick books that exist about that kind of stuff. And I agree, we shouldn't get bogged down into, I worry that if we start wandering into some of these subjects where, you know, to the, to the distraction of other strategies like helping the average homeowner figure out how to put, uh, you know, uh, solar panels on the roof. I, I think that would be a mistake. You know, because it's, as I say, it's, it's very complicated, very arcane, and it's very, very hard to, to properly implement and supervise.
It's a little like need verification. Todd, Fred is. So, um, yeah, so, um, we'll go to public comment in just a second.
Just very briefly, the Delaware Valley Regional Plan Commission is working on a model green building bonus ordinance that can be used across the region. They're six months to a year away from having a draft available for review. Uh, however, one of my colleagues is on that committee, doing research on this, working with other great green building thinkers from across the region to try to put this together. And he offers to come to a planning commission meeting here if you want him, or work on your, if you form a committee, uh, to work with you guys and provide support and connection to the regional work that's being done. So, let me know when you want him and I'll get him for a meeting. And there's also, um, CP's financing available for energy, uh, green building elements through the County Redevelopment Authority. And any non-residential project is eligible for this very favorable way funding for any kind of green building elements. Uh, and I have more information about that. That's, you know, the developer would work directly with the redevelopment authority on that, but, uh, something that can be mentioned and seen. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Council President Bush, welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Sure, I always enjoy hearing more discussion of this topic. I, I, you know, just to echo, um, what you said about taxes, since this came up, you know, I've, I've researched this topic and, uh, Todd, uh, I believe you are correct that, um, we don't have the ability to uh, offer a tax break. Um, we're very limited in the sort of narrow tax breaks we can offer, like the firefighter break you mentioned is like specifically mentioned in state law. There's a specific state law that allows that. Um, the only possible tax break that, that I've seen in Pennsylvania is a rebate on permitting fees, which I know has been discussed before, um, and has sort of been rejected as a path. So, uh, I think that the, the short answer is that the, the tax break, uh, for these green building uh, options is not, is not an option in Pennsylvania.
Do you think, based on the conversation you've heard, do you have any other questions for us?
Um, I mean, I, I, I share the, the concerns about how to enforce the construction inspections, like, I, I think it's, it's, I, I think that's going to be tough. I mean, we, we already have, you know, I mean, Kevin's already on site. So, I mean, we, we could, I mean, we, we could work some kind of compliance in there, but we can't check everything. I mean, you know, we're not gonna. So I, I, I would, I would, I would hope for like broad strokes for, um, uh, the construction aspect to say, well, we'd like to see you using recycled materials and we'd like to see you reusing, you know, adaptive reuse if possible, and we'd like to see these things and, you know, and maybe, you know, not get into super detail and just try to verify three or four things that they're doing, that they've promised to do, rather than getting into forty things, you know? So that's why I, I, I thought it might be easier to leave that part of the plan, um, uh, less of a, less of an exact metric and more of a, more of a negotiation, I would say.
Kevin, um, you, you're allowing us to see, which generally means you have something to add to the conversation.
Yeah, I don't want to get too deep into it. I just, for example, um, I think in Philadelphia, they use certain floor area bonuses and story bonuses based on a lead design. The issue with that is that a lot of those lead inspections don't come from, you know, Philadelphia, they come from lead inspectors specifically, and they come like a year after. You know, where you're going to allow a building to kind of operate at full capacity for a year and shut them down if they're not complying. Um, I know other really unique specifications, like, like Fred was saying. If, for example, Comcast building, if anyone's familiar, their turnstiles need to be used at certain hours of the day. That's why they have staff outside, so you can't use the doors that open and close directly. Like little things like that are where they were giving bonuses. So if they were more generic and not as technical, I think that'd be much easier to enforce.
No, we know one here is talking about lead. We've already been persuaded to look from that. Okay, so because it's nine, it's almost nine o'clock, um, there's one other aspect of the green building that I wanted to remind you about that's in this memo, and then we'll move on to the five B. And if there's steam, I don't think that'll be long. If there's steam, we can talk about Airbnbs for a minute. Um, I've also, uh, suggested that, um, there's been discussion that a green building practice might conflict with the zoning code provision. Uh, maybe a solar panel has to be installed at an angle that's not compliant. Or a heat pump is in an area where that's a setback or something like that. Um, where, where, where for some reason or another, there's a, there's a conflict. And so what I have proposed is that we create a new special exception um, process for anyone who has to resolve a conflict with the zoning code in order to incorporate a green building practice. Um, which means basically, if you can demonstrate the following things, you would be allowed to install that green building feature, even though it may not be compliant in other ways. And those were, um, that the green building practice for which relief is being sought is recognized as desirable through its inclusion in the green building bonus program. So you, you'd have to be doing one of the things we're asking people to do. Um, that the relief sought is solely related to the implementation of the green building practice. Uh, the relief sought will not have an adverse impact on adjacent property owners and the burden would be on adjacent property owners to demonstrate that. Uh, and that the green building practices for which relief is being sought would be permanent. Um, or that the relief is reversible, um, if the, if the green building practice is abandoned. I know that's a tough one, but, um, that's again, something we can talk to the solicitor about. The, the bottom line is, um, rather than spend months and months and months trying to engineer a perfect code to try to chase all the green building technology that someone might want to use, it may simply be easier for us to say, you know, if you want to do one of these things and it conflicts with the code, you can demonstrate that what you want to do is simply for the purpose of creating a green building, then you can get a special exception. Um, so that's the second part of this. And I wanted to get input feedback on that.
Well, the, the question I have listening to that is, uh, I don't have any problem with the, you know, being a special exception process. I wonder if the building is a contributing building in the historic district, should it either as, as another step in that special exception or separate from it be something that the HARB would use?
Um, I think, um, number one, notwithstanding, the HARB should be a consultant. Um, I respect for their purview that they have. Um, but I think that, um, our, um, preservation code, or at the moment, mostly focuses on the removal of things, not the addition of things. So I don't think the HARB would technically have jurisdiction if someone wanted to add a solar panel. We have to go back to the code, but I, I do not believe that's the case. And also, I think there's a provision in the code that exempts things like that from the HARB's purview.
I think that's right.
Yeah, so the HARB, I don't think technically has any jurisdiction over this. I see no harm in consulting with the HARB about this.
But, yeah, I mean, to the extent that, I mean, these panels that are mounted on roofs have kind of a substantial aesthetic impact, which.
It's true. The council, uh, specifically. Yeah.
I was, I was, yeah, I guess I've come to accept that. If, if for some reason, through some study, somebody decides that it's, it's, it's advantageous to put them at an angle off of the, the roof angle, then it would really have a substantial negative impact, I think, to all that we've tried to accomplish in both the Form Base Code and the historic district ordinance. And that, that gets to be a rough thought. And I, I think we have to talk through what the language is in the ordinance. Uh, you know, and, and if, and I don't know whether that's a, that's even a concern. I mean, the, the, uh, difference in inefficiency of having a few degradations removed may be so insignificant that it never happens. But that, yeah. It's just something that I thought of as, as you were talking.
Presently, the language is that it should be parallel to the plan. Uh, but, you know, when you read the manufacturer's installation.
That's in the language now.
Yeah. Well, when you read the manufacturer's installation instructions and it says, you know, for optimal solar, you need this on a. for optimal solar, you need this on a 30-degree angle, whatever it is. I think that's what Todd's saying when he mentions special exceptions, where we could weigh the significance of the, you know, seeing a building from the sidewalk where, you know, being, being a planner, you look at a building from the top down. But living in Norbert, we look at buildings mainly from the sidewalk. How much are you going to really perceive that 15-degree variance of an angle? I don't know, maybe it's for discussion.
Well, this is worth discussion as much as it's part of the zoning code, but I don't, I don't, you know, it's explicitly excluded from the HARB. I'll say, in my younger years, like 30 years ago, I once, I used to be an editor of an architecture magazine, and I edited an issue of our magazine on the aesthetics of sustainability, wondering whether sustainable building practices would make us look at aesthetics differently. This isn't really different to me. And should in fact sustainability be seen? Should it have its own language? Should it be visible in the landscape, you know, as a new, as a new message to the world? It's like the debates that go on about windmills, especially windmills in the ocean. You know, people say it's going to ruin the ocean, but maybe we live in a new world.
Todd, you're talking about philosophy and...
Yeah, the philosophy is basically, I am not bothered.
The last hour of the meeting, you want to...
No, I'm saying that because I personally am not bothered by having solar panels.
The other aspect of this...
I think it's a new aesthetic.
My, my personal, my personal theory has been for a long time that the, the solar collectors that you see now is just a transitional technology. In 10 years, I wouldn't be surprised that, you know, you slap a coat of paint on your shingles and you have a solar collector.
Right.
You know, so I, that's why I'm not too hung up about what solar collectors look like now, because I suspect in not too many years, you know, you'll have a film on your windows that'll do the same thing.
It's already, it's already...
And that's actually the reasoning behind this, because we will never, ever be able to have a zoning code that has specifications that keep up with the technology. And so like, why bother giving us spending our time on this?
Yeah, and can I reply? Because, you know, you're very much a proponent or an advocate of performance first, right? So I have to reply to your aesthetics of sustainability piece and tell, and just share my knowledge. That is Aristotle said that a chair is a chair because it functions as a chair. While Plato would say a chair is a chair because it appears as such. And that's precisely the argument, I think, that we're having here. It's like, are we, do we know what we want to see when we look at a house? Or do we know that it's sustainable and that it's better for the environment?
Having spent 12 years writing this damn Ford Base Code, I would say that the whole premise of it was, as was said many times, to keep Norbert Norbert in the aesthetic of, of that was the whole reason for writing a code. And I'm, I'm a big believer in sustainable design and all these strategies. But we also don't want to end up with something and say, oh, look what this place looks like now, because of it. And we get a 2% better performance because of it.
I think personally, the bigger risk to all this is just the burden of administration and complexity. Competing interest is to attract investment and have affordable structures and so on. And so, you know, we need to be efficient in the development process, not loading it up with too much cost. But on the other hand, you know, the industry needs to, the whole community needs to move towards less emissions. So we have to try walk the line.
I think a special exception is the course of least resistance.
I, no, I think it's a thoughtful, a thoughtful escape route. It seems reasonable to me.
In the, in the particular case of the solar panel, when would a solar panel ever not meet the requirements that you laid out there for special exceptions? In which case, why not just change the code to allow solar panels at different angles? For other, other things, like an encroachment into the setback or other things that you were proposing, I think the special exception is a good choice. But if any solar panel is always going to meet those requirements, then why not just change the code to allow? I mean, if that's the policy decision, that they want to move that direction, why not just change the code to allow, to eliminate the restrictions on solar panels?
No, you could do that.
But I mean, you can still have the special exception for other things, I guess. Which is, why, why, why make people go through the special exception for solar panels, I guess, is the question.
Well, because there are limits in which one can operate in a way that is inoffensive. For example, if you put solar panels on the roof of your, of your American four-square that are parallel with the roof, the roof doesn't look the same way that it always did. But it's not, in my eye, particularly offensive. But if you cock them all on solar optimized, optimized angles, it will make the, the house look like a armadillo on drugs or something. We had an example on Windwood Road a few years ago of a house on Windwood Road that had, it was sort of like a, a pilot project up there where there were solar panels that were on these goofy angles in order to maximize, to perfect the angle of incidence of the rays. And boy, oh, boy, that was really something else. And I think the, when we, you know, when the planning commission dealt with this subject many, many moons ago, Jim Mayerman, the conclusion at that time was, and we wrote about solar panels and we wrote about keeping them parallel with the roof. That was the bottom, that was the end result. But the, the, the logic was, if it's inefficient, well, you just add a couple more panels to make up the difference. And that, that saves it from being an armadillo on drugs and gives you the benefit of the solar panels without, without annoying everybody in the neighborhood. That's where I think we should aim to go with this. We can't deny that the need for this technology can.
And geothermal, I think, is an example of a special exception, because that is more likely to have some far more requirements in terms of, you know, ground access and setbacks and, you know.
Well, I think it's a fair question about, that you raised Chloe. And so probably it's one for us to consider. And now, now report to council, I can report on this. Should they be some, and then, I guess, Jim, you're, if I'm correct, I'm hearing you're more careful with the process that doesn't stop things, but make sure things are valued.
Make sure what?
Things are valued, whereas just...
No, we have to keep this process going. And I, as, as Dave has said for himself, I think it's a, it's a goal that we must pursue. Question is, how do we pay for it? Yes, and I don't want to pay for it in a way that throws out all the hard work that we have done to make this town look the way it does. It's all about how it looks and feels. So there will be ways to accomplish this without turning it into somewhere that the Jetsons might want to live. I'm trying to avoid...
And just for the record, what I think, I heard Chloe basically ask was, why not make solar panels always cloud by rain? That's your going to say, yes?
Just, just to clarify, the proposal that Todd brought forth would be, you know, the existing zoning code says solar panels have to be clouded to the roof.
Right.
If someone wanted to change that, they'd have to go through this, to do something else, they'd have to go through this special exception process and meet these requirements. But the way I read them, and I know this is just a preliminary draft of a change, but the way they're written out, I don't see any way a solar panel, any kind of solar panel proposal would ever not meet those requirements. So why make them jump through a hoop?
But just to be clear, do you have to grant a special exception?
Yes, it's basically...
So if you meet the requirements, then you get the exception.
Correct.
Yeah. But what, in the real world, what I could see happening is if someone wanted to do what Jim was saying, neighbors could come and object, and the zoning sheriff officer could say, would you accept, would you, would you agree to amending your proposal in a certain way? Is that, you know, you know what I mean? There could be a little negotiation. If something really objectionable was being proposed. But at the end of the day, a special exception is granted if you can meet the requirements.
And if you want to be able to decide whether to grant it or not, then you don't write it into the special exception or require that they apply for a variance, in which case zoning board can say yes or no.
Yeah, the variance is a lot tougher.
Yeah, right.
I don't know what the right answer is, but you also have the right to paint your house pink polka dots.
If that's not regularly advanced, it's all...
Right, exactly. It's like, maybe the argument to Todd's second is really like, how does it look was the, the objection, right? It's not based on function, based on appearance, so.
The only trouble with pink polka dots is it drives all the other neighbors out of the neighborhood. An example of that is the IHOP house up, up here, Pinewood School.
Not there anymore.
Not there anymore, finally.
I think, I think for tonight, we can say we have a proposal, we've had a thoughtful suggestion and commentary about it, which I think is good report to council. Council might give us some feedback and we can take it from there. I mean, this is to get a sense of the room, and I think we have a good sense. And just want to keep moving things along as it's past nine. I will also ask if anyone in the, as we do, anyone in the public members and members of the public attending the meeting, would anyone like to make a comment or about either the green building bonus program or the special exception that's been proposed? Okay, I see silence on the Zoom, so we'll move on to 5B zoning proposals. This is, this is the proposal that would make changes to the 5B zoning district where there are historic properties, or commit flexibility development on those sites when the historic property is being preserved. So again, as with the other memo, things that are new are in blue. Now, I'll summarize it. So first of all, this overlay is, this provision is, is proposed to apply to properties that are in the historic district, overlay district. They have a contributing resource. They propose the preservation of the contributing resource and propose to develop the property either through subdivision or through the creation of multiple buildings on a lot. So it's a, for sites that are being developed that have historic resources, contributing resources. The proposed changes are, the modifications that you saw last time is this would apply, this would allow for apartment buildings to be an allowable building type for either new construction or renovation, before it was just new construction. It would provide four stories for the new construction of an apartment or a mixed-use building type, not just, I think, I believe the last version just had apartments. So you could actually build an apartment building or a mixed-use building type. Note, it's to 45 feet is the limit now, it would still be the limit, but it could also be a mixed-use building. Now, there was some comment at the last planning commission meeting about potentially setting back the fourth story. I looked at the code for Windsor Avenue, which is the one place where we have these setbacks. The code for Windsor Avenue is actually not, it's vague. It says the fourth story shall step back one foot for each two feet of height. It doesn't say two feet of height of what, or step back where. So we need to tweak that a little bit. So I just put that in there, but what I'm thinking is, it would be two feet of height of the addition. So if the addition is 10 feet, well, actually, you know what? It's, it's, it would be for the height of the fourth story. So if the height of the fourth story is 10 feet, you would have to step back five feet. So that's what I would propose here. Whenever that fourth story hits, we need to be stepped back half the distance of the touch, so probably about five feet or six feet. And that would be for any side that faces an adjacent residential lot, because we are sensitive to the adjacent residential neighborhoods. And we could also consider that applying to a street, which it does at Windsor Avenue. So the fourth story would be slightly smaller. And that is in response to comments we received at the last planning commission meeting. The, pretty much everything else, the only other change is I decided that trying to come up with parking design standards for underground parking is too complicated at this point. We should have parking standards for underground parking, but we'll just have, I think right now, if we receive an application, which we have for 714 Montgomery, and it has, if it does have underground parking, then we just have to use our existing code the best we can. If you would like, we could add standards for underground parking, but I started to look at that, it'll be a little complicated, because I think we'd also have to consider whether underground parking would be built anywhere in a 5A district one day and make sure it works there as well.
Yeah, I think there's a question, just how many properties in the world could even be remotely considered for underground parking?
I'd say further redevelopment in 5B. And this isn't tied to the historic district. And in all of 5A, that, you know, that if, if something is redeveloped, despite our historic district, just something to develop, almost anything is like 5A. You know, if someone, I don't know where else we allow apartment buildings, but if someone were to build an apartment building somewhere else, potentially. We've had basement parking. So anyway, but I think right now it's too complicated. So really, the changes from the last time we saw this 5B was to allow it to apply to new construction or renovation, to allow apartment buildings in new construction or renovation, to allow four stories for apartment buildings or mixed-use buildings, and have a modest setback of about five feet for the fourth story. And so that, that is the revised proposal. Does anyone have any further...
Yes.
So 5B, this is a business district. There's a lot of first-floor business along Montgomery Avenue right now.
Right.
A lot of that is now a contributing resource. Could this enable a lot of those to become pure apartment complexes that reduce our business footprint along Montgomery Avenue?
Well, you know, the, the profile of the buildings, there are smaller buildings on Montgomery Avenue that have first-floor business couldn't be an apartment building because they don't meet the dimensional requirements like lot size and things like that. It has to be a department building. So it would have to be a bigger, bigger building. So what you'd be looking at is like the building, I think the building next door, 714 Montgomery, which is an office building, theoretically could be changed to a...
Heart crazy, that building?
Yeah, that could become a heart. Because that is a contributing, contributing resource.
Yep, for some reason.
So if that concerned you, it could then just be, you know, if you're adding another building on your lot.
Yeah, I'd be interested, maybe I'll just do my own count, about how many, how many properties does it affect?
Yeah, well, it doesn't affect a whole lot right now, but that's not to say the historic district won't change. The 5B, no, there could be other things we modify.
I agree, Jim, I think it has to be balanced against your economic development for that area too. But I, yeah, I don't think it's a huge network practice.
Yeah, if it's concerned, then it could, it could simply be new apartment, apartment buildings could be allowable for new construction of existing buildings in major areas, mixed-use, or whatever, if that's concerned. Okay, so that's, that's the only comment I received, so.
Well, just to amplify that, I think the issue is about maintaining commercial property on Montgomery Avenue. So it's a revision, it focuses on that.
Sorry, if it's...
On, on strategies to maintain commercial along Montgomery Avenue, but not possible.
So are you saying that in support of Jim's concern?
Yes, because you sounded like you were going to potentially look at any...
Yeah, I'd be open to revive. Yeah, I think you're open to revise that back. Yeah, I just was trying to err in the side of flexibility, but if existing buildings should remain commercial, mixed use or.
Well, yeah, and or as you said, maybe, you know, how many properties does this really apply to?
It's a very small number as of, as of now. Uh, but you know, buildings could, lots could be aggregated in different ways in future, we don't know. Okay, well, that's, that's that for five B then. Um, do you want to spend fifteen minutes on Airbnb of these two are kind of sinking and, uh, set the stage? I'm sorry, is there any public comment on that topic, five B? The proposed revisions to the five B district? Kevin, did you have a comment? No, you want to talk about Airbnb's? Okay. Uh, if there's no comments, then we'll move on. Um, we've talked a lot about Airbnb's here, uh, and how they are handled under the zoning code and how that is a could be defined as a land use, regulated, where it could be applied. It's hard for us to get our arms around it. Our staff has brought this, uh, to our attention again, it's a pressing issue. Um, they'd like us to address. So what I have is, uh, I'd like Kevin to introduce the issue and then I have, um, some suggestions, one from John Walco. At least maybe it's a starting point, but Kevin, why don't you fill us in, um, on what you're seeing and what you, what you would suggest we, uh, look at or consider?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so in the past, as many of you, many of you know, um, there's any doesn't regulate Airbnb's as a defined use in the use tables or anything like that. So when it comes to enforcement, the way that we've always gotten to issue the violations working with John Walco is that we use the, uh, family and then obviously one family dwelling. And so essentially most of the Airbnb's that we've previously received complaints about are in districts that only permit one family dwelling, such as three B. So in other words, if you're using it as an Airbnb, we're saying you're not using it as one family. It's a transient use, multiple families and therefore not permitted, and it's worked. We haven't been challenged on that. We have gone to court and we successfully won. But that being said, the new problem is coming up in some of the larger density districts. Um, I believe we have one that could be a real issue in the three C district where that district actually permits multifamily dwellings. So we can't get to the violation the same way to enforce that it's not permitted. Um, so we're asking that, uh, we come up with maybe a new definition of it and Todd will talk about what John gave earlier today and then maybe decide where we want to have these uses. Uh, the, the issue is if we come up with a solution soon, the complaints currently are in a building with many, many units and by not enforcing it, the other units are thinking they can do it and it's kind of spiraling out of control.
Are we not covered already by the, by the language about the length of stay, the minimum length of stay in a unit?
We, we don't have that defined.
You know, I thought we did.
We usually, there was an ordinance, did that pass? Maybe it didn't pass.
I don't know what it ended up being, but I know we talked about it.
I think anything under a month stay was considered a short term rental and prohibited.
Right, right. That's what I thought.
I don't think that ever got adopted.
No, I, that blows my mind.
Well, that's essentially what John Walco has provided. Uh, Kevin, I'm not sure this is exactly the right language. So John, so one of the, one of the suggestions is, is that we, uh, adopt language that defines a short term rental and then we establish where we believe short term rentals should or should not be allowed by district. So the, the language that John Walco provided, which I think is not exactly right, Kevin, uh, but I'll read it. Is, uh, any dwelling unit utilized as a single family residence, and that's where I think it doesn't work for you, Kevin. Uh, that is used or otherwise available for rental leasing or subleasing or otherwise marketed as being available for rental leasing or subleasing for the purpose of overnight lodging for a period of twenty-nine days or less. So essentially, if you rent it for thirty days or more, uh, then, uh, like a month to month, then, then that would be okay.
Just February twenty.
Yeah, well. Just, yeah, you get a good layer on that one.
Sometimes it's twenty-nine days.
Yes, it is. I'll tell you a story about that. Um, but anyway, um, I think the problem with that definition is it's, it says, um, single family residence. Um, so I think, though Kevin, I think if we were able to tweak that so that it just said any dwelling unit, we would all that, that uses a single family rent, or we just characterize it in a different way. What you're looking for, the key to you, Kevin, is that it's used or otherwise available for rental leasing or subleasing or otherwise marketed as being available for rental leasing or subleasing for the purpose of overnight lodging for a period of twenty-nine days or less. That's less. That's what you're really looking for, right?
Right, a good definition, the length of stay, and then what they do are this subleasing and leasing. So they even get into subleasing. So that's a policy issue.
Does rental leasing or subleasing this definition? So the trick, Kevin, is this definition of short term rental would have to apply not just to a single family residence. What, you know, it would have to apply to an ADU, right? It would have to apply to what you're observing, a multifamily building or a, uh, multiple family dwelling, right? Would have to apply to any residential building type, not just.
Yes, singular dwelling unit have to apply to, or singular unit.
Actually, also just to clarify, does it apply to a hotel room?
Hotels, different use.
Kevin, with this language, would this cause a conflict if someone had a bed and breakfast or a hotel?
Well, the hotel by definition is transient use, um, but the bed and breakfast is defined separately. I'd have to look at what was it? I'm not sure I can answer that right now.
Let me ask the planning commission this, if between Kevin and John and staff and whoever else, if we could wordsmith this, are you supportive of an amendment like this in zoning code?
Can I, yes, can I add on a little small layer on this? Like.
Let me, let me make sure everyone's, before you add a layer, you generally, I have a layer to add to, but how about you, James? Okay, so what's your, what's your layer?
I'm agreeable to regulating Airbnb type enterprises. I think though, we don't want to legalize informal arrangements or, or rent, so-called rental situations that people come up with just sort of, you know, on a person-to-person basis. And I don't really see how we could actually, you know, I mean, if, if I, if I say my friend from, you know, my, my friend could stay with me for a year or something, or I guess, you know, a couple of weeks or something like that, and he's going to contribute something toward household expenses or something like that, you know?
Okay, so Kevin, this question about informal roommate arrangements, and I'll add another question too. So when we discussed this once before, we had a very articulate, uh, presentation by a member of the public who said, I live in my house, I like to rent a room out uh, as an Airbnb, uh, I'm always there, you know, I'm the host, I'm there, and I don't see why I shouldn't be allowed to do this. And I think we all generally agree, yeah. If you live in your house and want to rent a room out Airbnb, that's one thing, but if you are like, uh, absentee Airbnb, that's another. So, uh, Kevin, what are your thoughts about those two?
Yeah, I completely agree that I think as long as the, the primary owner remains in the house, I think that should be permitted. I think you could even say that that falls under the definition of a family, which is any number of individuals living and cooking together. Um, no more than three, unrelated by blood marriage. So that could kind of fall into there if you're renting out to up to two people technically. Fewer is only one sole primary owner staying there.
I think you would need to clarify because the way it's written, it's like you're holding out for rent less than nine days. And that would seem to exclude, you know, renting a room out for less than twenty-nine days. Unbearable, even if it's, you're there, even if you're there. So if you want to carve out and say excluding, you know, uh, units where the owner is the primary resident and remains on site or something.
And you might want to have a carve out, not requirement to be the owner necessarily, but a long-term.
For the, yeah.
Resident, just like someone who rents up the entire home and then subleases a room to a friend or something or whatever.
So I think that's, that we discussed this before. I sound agreeable to everyone. Okay, so, so we have a definition here. The definition needs to be tweaked to reflect all kinds of dwelling units, not just single family residences. The language needs to be tweaked to ensure that a long-term resident or homeowner who's just renting out a room uh, and is there or, you know, these kind of informal roommate arrangements would, would not be, uh, prohibited. So if we can work that language out, is everyone agreeable to that? Okay, so Kevin, I think over the next couple of weeks, we can work this language out and then put it into the hot pot for, of, of adoption.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The one thing I'd like to add to keep in mind is, um, for the Airbnb's, there's for the most part more than with the primary owner, more than one adult is there going to be a need for increased, uh, parking requirements.
I'm sorry, um.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think it really matters. I'm talking about like somebody staying in an extra bedroom. It's not, for all we know, they came on the train. It's not, this isn't going to be a big scale thing. The, the primary issue here isn't even about the nuisance of like a particular property. It's the risk potentially of like large scale operation, right, of Airbnb's. Uh, within, within a larger, within a, like within a larger apartment building or within a larger neighborhood, right?
Yeah.
Conversion.
Well, the reason I bring up the parking is because a lot of the complaints are on some of those tighter streets where people are used to the, uh, prior to running the Airbnb, there was a single car there and now there's multiple two or three cars in the street and that's actually how they're kind of catching them, the use changing, the, the constant changing of the number of cars.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the scenario of like a house being occupied by multiple people, right? It would be a guest and a.
No, but, but, but the point is on, on many streets, just the addition of one or two cars makes a difference.
Because this is, I, I've said this a million times. The natural ebb and flow of the composition of households in a block will lead to this anyway. And so I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not sure how big an issue.
But that's different than somebody basically having a commercial use in a residential property, which is where I've always come down on this issue, Ron. It's a commercial use in a residential property and maybe it can be done in a way that's acceptable. But I agree with Kevin. I think the parking is, you know, if the, if the owner of the property is there when that room is being rented, okay, I'm probably okay with that, but the parking is the issue.
But, but just as a technical point, we went over this for hours with ADUs and we came to ADUs don't require an extra parking space, right? Except under most circumstances, and this is just the same thing. It's just instead of an ADU outside or in your basement, it's just a bedroom. Because the main idea is that you're not allowing, you know, the house to be used to rent it out for a party, right, for the weekend with who knows how many guests or not allowing for the building to become primarily used as a hotel instead of an apartment building and so on, so.
Your council has an active ad hoc parking committee right now designed to address parking issues of guests of all kinds. Guests, commuters, people who really should not be on the street for free. But, you know, this is.
Shouldn't be on the street for free. You, you sent out, you sent out in the pre, pre-read, uh, sorry, the, uh, the borough's, uh, parking recommendations. I'm skipping through them, but you know, so I live on a regulated block. I've gotten a ticket on my own car with, you know, uh, that I pay and, you know, what to do, great. And we, and, and then, you know, if I have my in-laws come for more than two hours on a, my birthday, I've got to like file paperwork with the borough in advance. I mean, I don't, I mean, it's overkill sometimes for, for, for what the problem really is. I think, you know, and I live on a street that reasons regulated, one of the reasons, right, it's ran to the train station to commuters and you can only park on one side to maintain adequate cartway. So, you know, it's tight for the block and under the worst case I have to park on a different block, but it doesn't happen very often. But I mean, I, so I, I'm aware of the context, but I, I just don't think this is, the solution is to bring down a hammer, you know?
I'd also say the borough's new, the proposed parking policies would deal with this in part by, um, requiring visitor permits, uh, and providing more flexibility on where permits can be used. They won't just be blocked by, that block will be by itself in the borough. And so, uh, and actually there, the, the policy would increase the cost of permits for additional cars, like not, you don't just pay five dollars a car now, like your, your third car is going to be like two hundred bucks or something like that. So I think they're trying to come up with a more balanced way of managing the parking. So anyone who wants to rent a room out, like a fellow that they've been talking to us, would have to buy a visitor parking permit.
Yeah, I think, you know, they ought to automate that so you can do it through the smartphone. And, but anybody just, if you don't have a permit, a residential parking permit that we have to pay for, um, you know, it, it's a two hour zone or a four hour zone or whatever, there's a rate and you just pay it. Just like what any other parking.
Well, I don't want to deal with the borough's parking box.
Well, I mean, it affects me first when I live on that street, so.
I mean, I live on a street where I often have to park a half a block away. It's just how it is. You know, and there's contractors who park on the street, they're contractor vehicles. You know, there's a guy who runs a contracting business, he parks his trucks on the street. Just happens, like I've got better things to assess it. So I don't, I, I guess I'm not a supporter of extra parking permits, but, um, if it's worth, you know, if it's concerned, we could vote on whether that is, needs to be cooked into this or not, or is there consensus? It's just a random, I don't sense I am here supportive of additional.
To, to your point, on a regulated street, the Airbnb guests will have to register their vehicle under the new program anyway, so.
Okay, okay, perfect. Yeah. Jim, would you recommend requiring an extra parking spot? David, would you?
I mean, I'm not dodging the question, but my contribution to the discussion would be just that we should have designated zero emission vehicle parking that would encourage people to get their EV, ZEVs and get their parking spot and without contestation from anyone, but.
Okay, I, I didn't want to stop. We, we cannot talk about EVs in this.
I know, but I'm just saying as an alternative solution, but no, I am, okay, yeah, fine. Get a parking pass for a week.
Jim, would you recommend an additional parking spot?
No.
David, you?
Well, I think, I think some kind of concept like the parking pass. I have to admit, I'm hung up on the idea that somebody is, is having a commercial economic gain in their residential property. And if they're going to do that and, and they're going to use up a parking space on the street, then it probably should come at some cost to them.
There should be licensing. I would assume that the revenue is taxed by the borough as business income, you know, those things, uh, come into play. Um, maybe that's not our purview. We can suggest that, that, that these need to be licensed, registered, licensed and you know, pay a fee or a tax or, or maybe the borough needs to levy a hotel tax. I don't know. I don't know if they can. But, but maybe our suggestion is from a zoning point of view, we can make this change, but we think that there is a burden and that the borough should look to see it from a business taxation point of view as a way to recoup some of the better. Okay. Any public comment on the issue of Airbnb's? Kevin, is that, we work on that in the next few weeks. Does that get you where you need to be? Okay.
Sorry, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing our attention, Kevin. Okay, any public comment on any other matters, uh, related to planning commission business right at the end of our meeting? Okay, with that, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Spear in a second.
Second.
Okay, on paper adjourned. Okay, you're, we are starting half an hour early than normal, meeting is adjourned.
We're, we're actually done an hour earlier than we need.
So fully big shades are open. We can go get a beer. Our time is terrible. Thanks, everyone.